September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting, the Town and Niskuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission to order. Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme.
Present.
Mr. Khan.
Here.
Mr. McPartlin.
Here.
Mr. Darapino.
Here.
Ms. Shenfield.
Here.
Ms. Gold.
Present.
Chairman Walsh.
Here.
Mr. Scraby-Tennis is here as well. I just dialed in. Sorry for the delayed entry.
Okay, thank you. So Ms. Gold, you'll step down and Mr. Scraby-Tennis will take his seat. Thank you. So all members are present except for Mr. Oster, who is excused tonight. All right, we have two sets of minutes to review for tonight. The first set of minutes being from the July twenty-sixth, July twenty-sixth, twenty-one meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
And that was moved by who? I'm sorry.
Mr. McPartlin.
Mr. McPartlin, thank you, Mr. McPartlin. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, that was at Ms. Shenfield? That was Ms. Shenfield, seconded that. All right, and discussion. I do have two comments on the July twenty-sixth, two minor comments. Just let me look at my notes here. First one being on page two, line fifty-three. There was a vote of seven to zero regarding Eastern Parkway Resolution. So on line fifty-three, that should say Chairman Walsh, I, to complete that seven people vote, okay? And the only other comment I have is on page three, line one oh-two, and it's just a typo, and that's Mr. Brennan. Mr. Brennan is spelled wrong, and those are the only comments that I have. Does anybody else have any comments or changes to the minutes?
I did. On line ninety-one, Mr. Brennan, I did look back at it, but I believe he spells his first name with only one N.
I think you are correct. Thank you, DC.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions or comments on the minutes? Okay, so the minutes, all those in favor of modifying the minutes as we just stated with a couple of typos, and with the adding my positive vote there, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, any opposed in a modification? Hearing none opposed, all those in favor of approval of the July twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one meeting minutes signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the July twenty-sixth meeting minutes are approved. Next set of meeting minutes is the August ninth, twenty-twenty-one meeting minutes. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Mr. McPartlin, thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Khan, thank you, Jengus. Okay, any corrections to those minutes? I have none. Okay, hearing no comments or corrections, all those in favor of approval of the August ninth, twenty-twenty-one meeting, August ninth, twenty-twenty-one meeting minutes signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, hearing no one opposed, no one's abstentions, we'll approve those minutes as presented. Thank you. We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move to privilege of the floor. Anyone wishing to be heard regarding any planning and zoning matters at Town and Niskuna, we'll have you speak up if you're online. Laura, did you have anybody join in?
I don't, nope. I just double-checked to make sure there's no last-minute additions, but nobody asked to be at the meeting tonight.
Right, and we had no email communications or letters or phone calls?
Nope.
No, okay. All right, last call for privilege of the floor. Okay, so we'll close privilege of the floor. We have no unfinished business, and under new business tonight, we have one resolution, Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash thirty, a resolution for site plan approval for an addition requiring area variances to the existing building at thirty-four-ten State Street, and that's Upstate Gun and Ammos. Mr. Darpino?
Yes, so regarding Mr. Seraphini's project, what I would like to suggest to the board at this juncture is to table the resolution and move it into the discussion period. The reason being is that there's a lot of information that was sent out that we've only had a couple of days to review. Prior to that, the planning department, myself and Chairman Walsh have gone through all of the drawings and have a very good handle on a lot of the updates that his architect and engineer have done and wanted to get everyone's input. If we're comfortable with what we see after the discussion period, we could bring it back for the formal resolution tonight to vote on it.
All right, we have a motion to table the resolution. Do I have a second?
Well, second.
Seconded by Mr. Khan. All those in favor of tabling the resolution signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed to that? Anyone opposed? Okay, since no one's opposed, we're going to table the resolution, and we're going to move off of new business, possibly temporarily, and go on to discussion items. The first discussion item being thirty-four-ten State Street, site plan application for the addition at Upstate Gun and Ammo. And I guess Mr. Darpino?
Okay, so the package that we received had quite a bit of new drawings and some updated information in there. I wanted to go through the four major points of the updates that Mr. Seraphini has put up to this point. The first one is the demolition plan. And Laura, if you want to share the screen or Clark, if you want to share the screen, we could go through some of the major drawings so that the other board members can see them or anyone for the public. But a quick recap on the demolition plan. It locates the area where the storage container or the Conex will be relocated over to the eastern edge of the property. There's an area down off of Albany Street that is slated for demolition that will be part of the parking lot upgrades, and then it just outlines where the existing building is. The second drawing is the grading plan. And that shows the outline of the proposed building, which has been exactly where it has been all along. It locates the parking spaces that were required and then just shows the grade as it slopes away downhill towards Albany Street. Setbacks are also listed on that drawing that were part of the zoning board review. The third drawing is the landscaping plan. A couple of things to highlight. The proposed building has a large foundation that'll be exposed on the Albany Street side. There are several plantings that we requested to have added down on the south side. Along Albany Street, you'll notice that that cut is now gone for the road cut, and there is a wooden fence that will be added along the grassy area. And we can talk a little bit more about the landscaping, whether grass or some low-maintenance plants would be a little bit more appropriate there.
Dave, where are you seeing the wooden fence? We're not proposing a wooden fence.
Oh, it says a wood retaining wall.
That's existing.
Oh, that's existing, okay, all right.
Yep.
So then that remains in place, but the curb cut is gone. And then if you go down a couple drawings, you can see the lighting plan. And the numbers that are gridded across the drawing are the number of foot candles that each of the lighting, new lighting on the building will cast down. There are a couple areas that are a little bit higher than what the code allows, but I think we can talk about that in a little bit more detail. The cut sheet for the lights is the next attachment. These are direct downlights. These aren't lights that will be casting, casting light directly or upwards, so they're very low-pollution style lights, and they're basically used for security around the building. One of the other items that we'll probably touch base on is the fact that the storage container will be used throughout the construction process. It is very likely that it will be moved around occasionally on the job site as construction activities are required. The owner and the engineer can probably touch base on that a little bit, but I just want everyone to be aware that the storage container will still be onsite until completion of the project or very close to the end. The rest of the drawing package shows full set of plans, elevations, and some building sections, and I think that that's a good summary of where we are.
Okay, thank you, David. And I'd just like to point out, one of the other new bits of information is that a town-designated engineer has been employed, I guess you could say, at the cost of the applicant, and that's CT Mail, which will be performing a review of the standard items to support this project. Let's see, I guess, you know, the conditions that are on the proposed resolution should be able to cover dressing, the lighting, and the plantings. I think those are the two things that seem to be the most open items, along, of course, with the Architectural Review Board of the proposed facades. Mr. Henry was trying to help out and taking a look at the lighting and identified some concerns of possibly spillage onto the Graham Coffee Parlor and possibly onto Albany Street. Have those been modified as a result of those conversations, or is that a work in progress?
I'm actually waiting for my lighting guy to get back to me, but essentially, I will pull the light packs completely on the side that I share with Grahams. And on Albany Street, if he feels he can come up with something that's going to have low enough intensity lighting to, you know, to not have the bleed over, we'll re, you know, we'll re-address it or we'll, you know, we'll create a new plan to show you, but short of that, they're coming straight off, and that way we will have no bleed over whatsoever.
Okay. All right, so all this information obviously was included in our packets over the weekend. A lot of it was, I believe, dated like August twenty-third, twenty-fourth timeframe, so that's why we wanted to make sure that the board has an opportunity to know what we received, you know, it was included in the packet, but didn't give much time, and see if the board has any questions or comments or concerns regarding this project. So I'd like to open it to the board, to the board and ask, do they have any questions, comments, or concerns with this project?
Hi Laura, this is Mike. Have we received any comments or any inquiries from the abutting residential owners on Albany Street? There appears to be approximately five houses in the block immediately south of the property. Have they spoken to the project at all, to the best of your knowledge?
Yeah, so we received a letter from one of them that put their address on there, which was directly across the street, that was in support of Mr. Seraphini's project. And I believe maybe one other one was also in support, but we did receive one anonymous not support at the zoning board for somebody who said they lived across the street. So generally speaking, two out of three supported. We did get one anonymous one at the zoning board when they were reviewing whether or not to do the area variances.
And that's why the landscaping and the lighting plan are so important to us, just because of the neighborhood along Albany Street, and we make sure we get a good solid review on that. We understand that the business requires to have a certain amount of security, but we need to balance the security along with the neighbors to make sure that both entities are satisfied, as we always try to do.
Laura, the non-support letter will point where they're raising points, where they're raising, if you remember?
I can pull it up really quickly. I don't remember off the top of my head. I'll go look for it real fast, because I got my computer here, so hold on.
Thank you.
I apologize that this has been covered previously, but I don't remember whether or not the the proposed addition includes any crawl space or basement area.
It does not. It's a slab on grade.
All right.
You can see that in the architectural sections if you wanted to look at it.
Yeah, so the comment was, you know, at the ZBA level, obviously the ZBA granted the variance, not that the comment's not important, but it would either have to do with parking or just the addition itself and the setbacks, of course, the area variances that were required in order to affect the ZBA approvals.
Yeah, understood Chairman Walsh. I just wanted to, it was easy for Laura to find, I just wanted to know for.
Yeah, I apologize. It wasn't scanned, and we must only have, it must have been mailed, because
Okay.
it's not in electronic photocopy.
I believe that, I believe that the zoning, it was just stated that they don't support the project.
That's my remembering. I thought it was a very general, just we don't support the variance, but I can't.
Yeah, and just out of a general, on my end, my understanding is the person was anonymous, did not disclose an address or a name, so we don't even know if it's a neighbor in reality or if unfortunately it's a competitor or somebody that might just not like my industry, so without anything to look into it, it's hard to quantify what that really is.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Excuse me.
Well, sorry, this may just be because I don't understand architecture, but if there's a five-foot gap between like the bottom of the building and the Albany roadside, that exposed foundation that we're screening with the plants, that whole entire thing is just going to be solid concrete when you say slab on grade?
No, it'll be back, there'll be walls that extend above grade, as you can see on the elevation. I believe it's five foot ten-ish. It'll be backfilled with structural fill inside the walls and then a concrete slab board.
Is that just for, because I was just wondering, like, if you have storage, isn't that a great place to put storage? If you have a five-foot thing, or it's just not worth making that storage area?
There's other things that went into the consideration, cost of materials, you know, architectural crawl, crawl space isn't really easily accessible. Fire, there's a lot of reasons why we chose to go that route.
So there'll be no access into that five-foot-high space from the building itself?
That is correct.
Yeah, it sounds like it'll be backfilled, so.
Yeah, there won't be a space there. There's an existing basement below the existing building, correct, Matt?
That is correct, and that's also some of the reason why we didn't do that, because it's an old block wall unreinforced, assumed unreinforced, digging against that hydrostatic, you know, not hydrostatic, but lateral earth pressure is pushing against it from the excavation. There's a litania reasons why we chose to go that route.
And architecturally, what's going to be the texture of that structure, of that portion, the five-foot-ten portion?
Just smooth concrete form finish.
Okay, not painted or?
No, as of right now, it's proposed to be exposed concrete.
So the Tree Council had a comment because they reviewed it for landscaping of the foundation in thinking of the neighbors that were across the street, and the one thing they noticed was that that landscaping would all die back in the winter, and so there was wondering, well, they had a couple of things. They think that more things that will be all-year-round screening of the foundation, and then also they were wondering if there's a way to do like decorative rock or something on the foundation, and then they also would like to see more trees. They know, they totally understood the security. They were wondering if you could put more trees like on, like the corner away from the building, if there's room for trees over there.
I'm not adverse to, you know, doing some extra with landscape. You and I had actually spoken of that ahead of time. You know, beautifying my own property only benefits me, so no concern there. In regards to the trees that tend to die off towards winter time and whatnot, I definitely understand that. Maybe we can look at painting the building, doing some decorative rock, things like that, so it breaks it up and softens it along the way. The one big thing is with the amount of snow and subsequently salt that gets pushed that right to that spot, we're going to have a very difficult time keeping anything alive there. So we are definitely happy to do like decorative rock, because that, I think, might make life a little bit easier in the overall.
Yeah.
I think when we say decorative rock, I believe they were referring to like cultured stone adhered to the face of the concrete wall, not rock on the ground.
Right.
Okay, point of clarification that I didn't understand.
Okay, yeah, so I was coming from the perspective of something, painting or decorative rock on the wall that doesn't, that's visually appealing, right? It looks good, knowing fully well that it's going to be a challenge to keep greenery alive in that strip.
I have no problem coming up with a solution that I think would be, you know, visually pleasant for everybody. You know, we can try painting it, we can try, you know, doing a little bit of rock. That honestly is minimal concern for myself, because I believe that we can easily overcome any concerns with it.
And I agree, and I think also we have a condition for the Architectural Review Board. That's something you can discuss with the Architectural Review Board with Mr. Henry and Mr. Darpino, come up with a solution that works for all, so I don't expect a problem there.
By the way, I'm sorry, one last thing. Craig, remind me, are you, so, and this is because it's going way back, way, way back. This started off as the temporary storage, et cetera, but now that you have a building in there, are you going to change the use in any way? Like, are you going to do a class or something like that, or anything else? Other than just sell?
We already do classes, but we do host them off-site.
Right, I know that.
With the addition that we're putting on, it's retail space. I'd love to be able to do classes in the building, but unfortunately, you know, what we have on the second floor is storage. It's not something where it's going to be any public access whatsoever.
Okay.
So we just don't have space.
Good question, Mr. Khan, thank you.
Um, can you, Laura, can you pull up the landscape plan again? I just wanted to speak to the one question about the tree further away. I wanted to point out where our grading is and where the majority of the site utilities come in to this plan, which is going to prohibit the location of that tree. So if you look on the southwest corner is basically where we're talking about, and if you look, I kind of tried to pull some landscaping away from that corner already to kind of come down towards Albany Street, but right there is the utility pole. We are going to be proposing underground electric utility service. The gas service comes in between the property line and the building right there, as well as the sanitary service. So we've got a lot of utilities going in that western side of the building. And when you look at the grading plan, we have put a swale in. You can see the revised contours all along there. So any water that comes off of the roof and off the building, instead of sheet flowing across onto the Graham's Coffee Parlor property, which is what happens now, we're going to be containing it into the swale and discharging it out onto Albany Street. So it's actually an improved drainage design and proposal versus what's there now. And ultimately, the design point is still the same, which is Albany Street.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. I completely understand why a tree doesn't fit there. They were actually thinking this corner, because they, because I passed on Craig's security concerns about the trees. They were wondering if you could fit some, like here in this corner on the southeast.
Okay, actually, there's, there are trees and shrubs delineating between us and Mavis. So what you're saying is they're looking for us to come Albany Street heading west with something?
Yeah, if you can fit something, they would just like to see more trees down there, because it's just not a very true area. And if you have room, it would be very exciting to see some trees there.
Okay, I, you know, obviously I don't want to commit till we actually look at what's there, but I absolutely have no qualms with trying to accommodate and, you know, get something pretty, a nice, you know, little tree, something, you know, that will make them feel like we're making progress with that.
Yeah, I think this well is, like, I saw that. I think that's going to help. I agree with you guys on that.
Just keep in mind, Laura, there's overhead wires along Albany Street on that south side there.
Oh, you're right here.
Obviously, you know, if we put some trees, we would kick them back into the property behind that retaining wall, but I would still recommend giving a medium-height tree. So as it grows up the canopy, I would not go with a full shade tree, because even kick back that shade tree is going to interfere with those wires, and National Grid's going to come through and, you know, trim it and make it look terrible.
Yeah, that makes sense. The Tree Council, National Grid, even its own program is Right Tree, Right Place, so underneath the power lines, they have like a lot of different small trees that you can use that look really nice.
Yep.
Yeah, I, again, I don't see any reason why we can't work with them to, you know, find something that accommodates their concern and, you know, doesn't interfere with anything else.
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly add two or three trees in that location. I don't think you're going to want to go any higher than that percentage.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Laura feels comfortable?
So the resolution before us tonight is for final site plan approval, correct?
That's correct. With the typical conditions of, you know, including the CT Mail designated in air review and Tree Council and ARB, and those are the primary ones. And the lighting, of course. So all those items that we just discussed that seem like we still got to like just tidy up a little bit are all addressed in the conditions of the resolution. What do you think, David?
I'm comfortable with moving forward tonight on site plan approval.
Okay. All right, so we got a motion to re-enter into new business and put the Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash thirty on the table, back on the table for action. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, that was seconded by Ms. Shenfield. All those that are in favor of bringing the resolution back signify by saying aye, or show of hands.
Aye.
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 Is anyone opposed? Okay, hearing no one opposed, we'll move back to new business with Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash thirty, thirty, excuse me, a resolution for site plan approval for an addition requiring area variances to the existing building at thirty-four-ten State Street. And I'll summarize the conditions before we vote, as usual. Further resolved, that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission finds that the site plan referenced above meets the requirements of the zoning code and hereby approves the site plan with the following conditions. One, the number of motor vehicles offered for sale on the lot at the automotive sales and service establishment shall be limited to the automotive display locations indicated on the above-referenced site plan and shall not exceed two at any given time. Two, to the maximum extent practical, the owner-operator business shall maintain clear delineation and separation between the two uses through distinct business spaces and appropriate signage. Three, prior to issuing a building permit, the building facade shall be reviewed and approved by the Architectural Review Board. Four, prior to issuing a building permit, the landscaping plan shall be reviewed and approved by the Tree Council. Five, prior to issuing a building permit, the lighting plan shall be modified to be compliant with town code or the applicant shall return to the Planning Board to request a lighting waiver. Six, in accordance with Chapter one eighty, the soil erosion and sediment control ordinance of the Town and Niskuna, the applicant shall put in place soil erosion and sediment control measures sufficient to stabilize disturbed areas. These measures shall be satisfactory to the superintendent of water, shore, and engineering and shall remain in place until such time as natural vegetation has been successfully established. Seven, prior to issuance of a building permit, any questions or concerns raised by the town-designated engineer will be addressed by the applicant in a formal letter to the town. Eight, prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall participate in a pre-construction meeting with the Town and Niskuna and TDE, and shall address any concerns raised by the town. And nine, prior to sites disturbance, the plan shall be modified to reflect agreed-upon decisions of the pre-construction meeting, if any, and distribute it as required to the town. Final site plan shall be submitted to the town labeled for construction. Do I have a motion, Mr. Darpino?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved for approval by Mr. Darpino. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Scribby Tennis. Uh, any questions or comments? I just like to say thank you for everybody uh uh allowing this to go forward. Uh, you know, again, it's lots of information to to take in over a few days. Uh, um, but I think we can get there and uh it it looks like the applicant uh is doing a good job and is willing to work with the town and appreciate your hard work, Mr. Hoffman, also to get this to us.
Yeah, I I appreciate the board's uh acceptance and uh was a lot of work in a short amount of time from zoning approval. Uh, but we got there, so.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments before we call the roll? Okay, Mr. Henry, please call the roll.
I just had one question regarding timing. I mean, now that the, that the approval of the container is essentially expiring, is there any timeframe for initiation of construction or anything, or is that, is that out of line with?
Well, I guess that will satisfy the uh the ZBA's uh, you know, requirement to having site plan approval. So now we got to get back to our our standard building practices. So soon as we uh we obtain information from the town designated engineer, we'll have to just close these items, which obviously will be the upper uh responsibility of planning office, uh, working with those associated boards. So it'll still be a work in progress. Obviously, we like to keep the ball moving. Um, uh, construction season is short. I got my guesses is that if we give approval tonight, by the time we come through these items, it might be tough to get a shovel on the ground this year. Um, uh, would be my guess because we're getting, we're getting close to the end of the building season. But hopefully, we'll do our best that we can to keep it moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Just to Clark's point, I do think that by passing this resolution, it's in compliance with the zoning board's conditions. Um, and so then it becomes a planning board condition, which actually site plan approval is good for two years. So you guys could shorten that if you wanted, or you could um just make, you know, just, I don't, that would be actually legally what is allowed.
Yeah. And I, 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 and I guess, you know, I I don't think Mr. Seraphini, that from all the work you've put in, I think as soon as practicable, I think you do want to begin construction, right? You're not gonna, we're not gonna, you satisfied the requirement that I think the condition that was there with temporary storage.
Exactly, and obviously, the, the purpose behind the addition and the storage unit, which initiated all of this is because I need the space, so.
Right.
Yeah, I I'd like to get going, but I I think realistically, there is no way whatsoever that I'm going to be able to complete the few things and retain a contractor that's going to start this year. I I I think that would be a recipe for disaster. I think knowing that it's coming next year and, you know, um, it's going to be a lot of construction schedules. I have talked to different guys and I know there's a lot going on in the industry, but I don't see any reason why very early next year, we're not going to get rolling.
Yeah, and to the last point you just made, I think you do need to lock in your contractors for next year.
Oh, absolutely. But that's what I'm saying there. I don't see any way where we're going to get them going this year.
Yeah, no, I understand.
I I've got to get everything locked in now.
Right, and the other intent by what I said too was that I'm, I'm expecting that you're not going to be having a temporary storage there for two years.
No, we've got a plan and we'd like to move forward with that.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
No, and Clark, I'm actually glad you brought that up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With a timetable? Yeah. Okay, all right, Mr. Henry, please call the roll. Mr. Laflamme?
Aye.
Mr. Scribby Tennis?
Aye.
Mr. Khan?
Aye.
Mr. McPartlin?
Aye.
Mr. Darpino?
Aye.
Ms. Shenfield?
Aye.
Chairman Walsh?
Hi, resolution passes. Um, uh, good luck and let's, you know, again, I think there's a little concern. We want to keep it going. Uh, we'd like, you know, we'd really like to see construction uh next summer and uh, you know, please try to get there. Okay?
That's our plan. Thank you. I know it's been a very, very, very long process with the board. And we've gone through a lot of incarnations with everything. I just want to say thank you for everybody for taking the time repeatedly to look it over and get us to where we are.
Okay, thank you, and we're looking forward to all the improvements over there.
Dave. Dave, I would also like to thank you for some of your comments on the architectural plans, although they weren't really needed for the site plan, but we did take those into account and I've already made some of those changes for uh building permits, so.
Oh, good, Matt, and we'll uh, we'll be reviewing those at the upcoming architectural, excuse me, upcoming architectural review board meeting.
Yeah, so if you have any other architectural comments, you know, send them our way.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, and I don't expect any other discussion on this matter tonight, so you're welcome to leave if you wish, right?
Thanks, all. Good evening.
Good evening. All right, and we're going to go back to discussion items. Uh, item number two under discussion, which is twenty-eight thirty-seven Aqueduct Road Site Plan Application for the Recreation Building at Rivers Ledge. I know we had Mr. Profandi and his engineer, Mr. Steinberg online. And I think we're just going to turn it over to them and let them uh talk about where they're at and what their proposal is.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'd like to thank everybody for having us on the agenda again tonight. And just to pick up where we left off at our last meeting, some of the items that Brett, myself and the architect had worked on since the last meeting was um comments on placement of the building. Um, looking at whether or not uh placement of the building would result in a downsizing of the building if, if we couldn't fit the placement with uh the setbacks. And then also discussions on landscaping in between the bike trail and the building location. And also uh the color of the building facades. So starting with the color of the building facades, um, Laura, is there a way you could uh share the rendering that I had sent over?
Looks like you may have locked up or something there.
Sorry, I shared the wrong screen. Sorry, my bad. I was like, why is nobody like, there it is? Let me try this one. Okay. That, right? Can you guys see that?
Yep, it's coming.
Okay, so we did three different color renderings. Um, the first, the first rendering that you see here is the Arctic White. And then can you scroll, Laura? That's the Pearl Grey. And then this is the Monterey Tope. So what we ended up going with is in receiving the comments from the architectural review board and then comments from the Tree Council and the residents of Alpos comments from our one planning board meeting was trying to meet the closest color to the existing zip board, the the, the construction sheathing on the building. Now, the zip board has a very vibrant green, which, you know, there's not a siding that really meets that color um on the market. We're dealing with hardy, hardy board um cementous siding. And what you folks see there uh in this rendering is the closest color to green that's available on the market. It's uh, it's like a, a mossy color. Um, and this is the color that we'd be proposing tonight um for that building due to the close proximity of the bike trail. Which is essentially supposed to make it blend into the surroundings a little more from the comments that we received. We, if we can switch to the um, the site plan, Laura?
Can you see it?
Yes. So after, after review of the site plan, taking into account the two comments that uh were received, the one concerning uh comment of the board was the setback. So what we first looked into was placement with Brett. And placement to be shifted down the road, so it'd be page north, became difficult to be able to fit the parking and meet ADA compliant code for the leading sidewalks that lead to the building. So essentially, what ends up happening is because as Laura is showing right now on this with the contour lines, you start to, as you shift page north, you start to come into a steeper slope, which didn't, didn't allow for ADA compliant walks that would lead to the building. Um, which that walkway to us was one of the most important walkways for our tenants because it kind of gave a scenic, a scenic walk along the pond that would lead to that fitness center building. And then also, we were running into just space constraints for the required turn radiuses and such for the parking in that area. Also, you would start to sacrifice the view, but the view really came out of it because the building just didn't uh, the placement didn't allow for the necessary things that the building needed, hence the parking in the sidewalks. The next thing that we looked into was the scaling the building back dimensionally so that it fit within the setback. Um, to, to be able to do that, we were looking at shaving ten to twelve feet off the building. Um, reviewing that with our architects and ownership, removing that much of the building was essentially eliminating a lot of the amenities that we were trying to include for the residents in that location, which was pretty much either downsizing the entire building, which would have made a smaller fitness area um and smaller game room, or just looking at clipping off the game room in its entirety. And, you know, the, the amount of residents that we have trying to downsize that building with what we have right now with the clubhouse and such, we, we were pretty much eliminating the, the amenities that we were going for with looking at the, the money spent and the amenities earned. So our proposal here tonight is that if we can look back at the, the, the grading and the landscape plan is we're hoping that the board understands that to be able to, to fit this, this building in and provide the amenities that we're going for with our tenants, that essentially we'd like to try to keep the building placement where it is, knowing that the fact that we, we did pick a color that blended in with the landscape and, and trying to uh not be, I guess, overburdening to the bike trail. We did add that berming in between the bike trail and um the building that would have additional landscape added to it. So you would have a buffer of seeing the vehicles, seeing the buildings in between. You would have some landscape and the green siding that would essentially make it blend in with its surroundings.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Profandi. Um, you know, it was a four-six foot berm. I think it's varies, right, within four-six feet?
That's correct, sir.
And with planks. Uh, you know, personally, I don't have a problem with the color. It seems like it's a reasonable request and seems like a reasonable color. Um, uh, but I'd like to, you know, hear the board has a say um uh regarding basically the proposal, which is, as you stated, um, capability pretty much as is and and work with the landscaping and the coloring to uh to blend the, the building in. Uh, Mr. Laflamme is a project lead. I don't know, Chris, if you want, want to add anything or any members from the board?
Thanks, Chairman. I have a couple of questions, just to kind of review the, the, the plan and some of the feedback we got from the Conservation Council, Advisory Council. Uh, a lot of the things, Charles, you're, you covered that was talked about. I think one of them was solar panel intended use, future potential. Can you give us some insight on that so that we have that on the record?
Yeah, we, we, we have not looked into any type of solar panel installations on this, on this property. And right now, you know, the, if it was, the comment was to any existing buildings, the roof trust designs don't support the additional weight. And in our, in our opinion, a lot of the time, those, our, our ownership does not like the solar panels on this building just because of the architectural look that it, that it would take away from.
And you're referring to the recreational building?
Yes, that's correct, Chris.
All right, that's fair. And then, um, you know, give us some insight about phase two. For example, will this recreational building be used by tenants of phase two and therefore need to be accessible by them? Any insight on that?
Yeah, so, you know, our, our demographic that we're going to be going again, going for on phase phase two would be the seniors. Um, the senior housing, we, what, we're actually starting to design some of the uh floor plans on that right now to, to bring in front of the board. What we've learned is, is the seniors don't really utilize these fitness centers like you see in this plan as much as they do these smaller uh bikes and treadmills. So we essentially in our senior buildings and other properties just do smaller fitness centers like um that are off of dead spaces and hallways and bump outs in the building's architecture that allow for less impacted, uh, impact type training like uh treadmills, uh ellipticals, things like that. So I don't see, I don't see the seniors using the fitness building, rec building as much as they would the clubhouse.
Okay, I just wanted to address that and it sounds like you would, you'd have something contained within that phase two structure to, to address that rec use.
Yes, the senior building would have its own amenities. So some of the amenities that we're looking at right now to bring in front of the board would be, uh, it would have its own little clubhouse lobby. It would have its own detached fitness centers, reading rooms. We're actually looking at putting a small barber shop salon um in there. Um, that was one of the comments we actually got from some of the seniors at Starbuck Island that they would like. So, you know, we, we uh will have a lot of the detached amenities in that building specific.
Okay, great. Um, you know, I'm sure others on the board may, may speak up, but we, we did ask for very specific things for you to consider doing, right? What are the options? We, we know there's a geographical challenge with the different variances in the height of the land. If you want to keep the ledges and there's a pond right in front of it. Uh, but you explored all those things that we asked you to do, you know, so I, I'm, I'm kind of thinking the way uh Chairman Walsh is thinking is that you've, you've considered those options. I do agree to, to make the, the building smaller just because of a, a setback where you actually are addressing the visual aspect of things with a berm. It is just a bike house path thing, passing through, right? Uh, and the structures are um, are purposeful and tasteful and the, the fact that we can use that moss color or that taupe color in the berm. I, I really think that this is a good fit myself, um, but I, I just wanted to just comment on the fact that you, you've really come back to us with a lot of the feedback that we had requested you look into. I can't think of anything that you didn't.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I just want to put a, and actually Chairman Walsh, it's both Chris and I that are colleagues on this one night. So I just wanted to put um a ditto to what Chris said. So the only thing I really want to add, so I am you know, comfortable with at least a CAC and their view of the berm. But Laura, I mean, I know it's a PUD. Typically, we like a twenty-two, at least a twenty-two foot setback. If we go forward and I understand, Charles, to what Chris had summarized, right, that you guys tried all the options we'd recommended. And again, thank you for that. Um, do, what, what do we run into here by way of precedence, Laura, in allowing for now a twelve foot setback? Laura, Paul?
Well, um, so the PUD sets its own zoning and I think that if you're comparing like one PUD to another, like if, you know, if there's a way to distinguish why this one gets twenty-two feet so that in the future, if, if, you know, a future PUD says, well, you gave twenty-two feet to that one, why can't I have it? It would be good to distinguish what your thought was because, I mean, each case is always going to be unique. Um, but if there's commonalities between this and another one, for the record, if you were willing to accept it to be that close, you would probably want to just make sure that it was covered and clear that, you know, the structure was so high and had the berm, it had the landscaping, the colors were considered, like all of those things that are mitigating the distance. Um, and also the things that tried, that you tried, almost like a zoning board case, right? Like, the topography is unique, like you can't move the building farther away because it starts to become um like a steeper slope and you lose the ADA accessibility. All of those things I think are really important to like articulate. If you were saying in your deliberations that you really don't like a twenty-two foot and you wouldn't like to see one elsewhere, but for these X reasons, this is unique enough to have it, that would help so that you're not really setting precedents.
Right, a, a, and so I would like us to capture that in some way. I mean, the, the, for me, the final takeaway after seeing, you know, Mr. Refundian team go through all the options, it would seem that any one of those options we suggested, you're better off. It would seem that any one of those options we suggested, you're better off not having building at all than actually having it smaller or placed in a more precarious way. Is that statement correct?
That's correct.
Right? A, a, and so, I mean, so for me at least, similar to Chris, that gives me similar Chairman Walsh. It gives me a basis for saying, okay, well, we've got a very specific reason here. Albeit, it would have been good if this was part of the original site plan and I would have felt much more comfortable approving a 12 foot setback on the original site plan, but granted, we are here where we are.
Can I, can I offer, uh, to get that to you, to your, to your point? What I think was makes this, this proposal slightly distinguishable, which allows me some comfort is that what we're looking at is amenity package. We're not looking at income producing, he's not increasing, increasing the, the intensity of the use. So I, I, I think that's an important distinguishing feature we should add to our approval that that's a, this, that's what makes this so unique for me, that it's an amenity package which strengthens the project, it's not jamming in another six units.
Yep, I like that. I think that's a good point. So I think with these factors, I, I mean, I'm, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable accepting the 12 foot as is. But I do think Laura, to the point you made and what Michael just said, right? That we do need to articulate clearly that we're not expecting this to be something that we're just gonna generally do again because we did it once.
Yes, and that was a, a good summary, Laura, of, of all the key points of, of why we, uh, I support, uh, this, uh, project as presented tonight, uh, along with Mr. Scribby Tennis's comments. I don't know if that's something the applicant should, uh, jot those all down or whether the planning office should, but we definitely, uh, uh, we should just document those bullets, um, that make this a reasonable request.
Yeah, well, the mechanism of the approval for this would be a resolution then, right?
Right, right. So I'm just saying who's going to write those down, whether, you know, Mr. Pafundi or Mr. Steenberg has them on their head and they want to just jot them down to help the planning office, that would be great. Uh, and then we can add, and, and we could add to those with Mr. Scribby Tennis's comment and what Laura had, make sure we got everything covered. Because, you know, again, it's amenities and I, I think it'll look good. And, um, you know, along with the, uh,
And the key thing is really the, to summarize the intent of the planning board here is that, is that literally, you know, it's, you know, the building is literally backed into a corner. And so it's either the decision is either they have it or they don't have it, right? There's not, uh, all other options have been investigated. I think that's the key thing.
And I think it's going to look good. I mean, the proposal looks good, you know, so.
Yeah, I, I think, I think too, I think the, the, um, the architect's, uh, design of the building um, has kept it as a very low profile, uh, design with the, the low shed roof. Um, and the, you know, the angled, um, which, which makes it a lot easier for, to, um, give it a, uh, to, to lessen the visual impacts.
Yep. Right, and, you know, and a little, my last point on this is that I, I'd like to be able to, to, um, sincerely say no to some future PUD that wants to come with a smaller setback. How's that sound?
Okay. Now, thank you, Mr. Khan, and, uh, and thank you for helping out on this project. Sometimes I lose track of who's got what as we help. I appreciate it.
I mean, I figured since I'm going to be talking a lot, I'd, I'd say, yeah.
Right. Does anybody else have any concerns?
Chairman Walsh? I had.
Chairman Walsh, I just might bring up one thing for the, for the board to consider. If you look back in the agenda statement a little bit, at the July 12th meeting, there was, there was some discussion about concerns across the river. And, and the agreement was made that those would be rolled into any, um, site plan approval. So just something you guys may want to talk about or let us know, that would be part of the resolution.
Thank you. I had that noted down also to get that, to see if anybody had any questions first regarding the proposal as it stands. Um, yeah, so my notes, thank you, Mr. Henry. I was going to say that, is there any concerns that are reasonable? That, uh, the town and the applicant feel that are appropriate for the resolution? Obviously, that it'd be a good spot to, to capture them. I know there's been a discussion and some, uh, effort put forth by the applicant to mitigate some of the concerns from, uh, our neighbors across the river there. Um, uh, either those have happened or changes in, um, uh, drawings or plans have already occurred or not, I'm not sure. So I'd, I guess I would refer to Laura, uh, what's going on with Mr. Pafundi with any of those concerns? And whether any of those need to be addressed in a future resolution.
So if, if Laura, you can chime in too, but, um, so the, the main, the main site plannings, we added some, some trees that, that were, uh, going to capture some of the light pollution on the parking lots that were supposed to come across the river that the residents were concerned about on the other side of the river. We picked those up, Brett picked those up in a revision. And I believe those were submitted at a previous planning board meeting. Uh, then there was also the reduction in the light, light pole count on the site, which, uh, was submitted with new cut sheets and, uh, 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 foot candle, um, um, design as well that shows the, the, the foot candle thread throughout the site. So, um, aside from that, Laura, if I'm missing anything, those items could just be included in any resolution, correct, that were already previously submitted?
Yeah, so I think the other thing that they had brought up was the landscaping at the park, which because more trees came down, which is why we're still out there working on the landscaping Kyle on the park. Um, so that's still something. And then the other thing which we decided we couldn't address was the, um, siding colors. So, um, so I think the siding colors we just kind of set aside because it just came a bit too late and it had already gotten approval for the colors that were ordered and put on the buildings. The park, we're working on the additional landscaping. Um, but the tree council had put in note, in the agenda statement that there's, there, you did add some trees in front of the parking, but we're, I think, still waiting on the final landscaping plan that was going to show two versions of landscaping for the building and a final plant count list. I don't think we have that still.
Okay, I'll, yes, the sec, you have the one landscape design, but you need the second reiteration, right?
Yeah.
I don't think I've, I haven't got.
Planting list. And just, and then we could take a look. Cause another thing that I was just thinking is, um, like, I had thought originally that the sidewalk was going to go all the way around the pond. But I can see that there's a lot of grading probably and mostly grading issues to the sidewalk going all the way around the pond and connecting so that people could do a loop. But that was where you guys stored a lot of the aqueduct stones, so there may be even more opportunity to squeeze some plantings in there. There may be a couple more places that you can squeeze plantings in, but we kind of need a final Euro version of a final planting plan so that we can comment on it.
Okay, yeah, the, the sidewalk, uh, did not carry around because there was a natural rock cliff face. Um, that really wasn't picked up in Dominic's original design, it was just inconstructible, so.
That's what it looked like when I was looking at your drawings, but it could be an opportunity for more trees to be put there.
Sure, absolutely.
That sounds good and appreciate your willingness to, um, to work with us on that.
Yep.
I got a question regarding just the mechanicals in the building. Nothing is currently shown. I wasn't sure how you were going to do heating and HVAC. And if you're going to have a shed roof, where are those units might be on the outside of the building?
Yeah, so they, they would be placed, um, uh, over on the berm side. Probably hidden, I haven't, I haven't released this really to the MEP designers yet. But if that's something that, it's a comment that I, once we release it to our subcontractors in the design build platform on placements, I would imagine that we would try to place them in the most inconspicuous areas possible. Um, which would be berm side of the building in between the building and the berm. They would be outside condensing units. And then the furnaces would be contained inside the buildings for heating.
So you may need to modify that plan just to add a small mechanical closet somewheres?
Yep.
Mm-hmm, okay.
That's always something in the design build platform that always fails. You always forget your utility realm, so.
Yeah, you just got a lot of, you got a lot of windows in there, so it's going to, you know, you're going to get a lot of heat gain and then heat loss. So, and plus with a workout area, a high volume of exchange at peak times will be helpful.
Absolutely, yep. We, we'll carve a space out for that, for that mechanical closet.
Okay, so I guess my question would be to, uh, Mr. Laflamme, Mr. Khan and to Ms. Robertson. Um, are we ready to call for a resolution for amended site plan? Or do we need to wait, uh, to get some more information regarding the, the landscaping, so that'll, uh, um, you know, and take a look at that prior to, uh, calling for a resolution? But, uh, next meeting's in two weeks, right, so?
The original Rivers ledge revolution said that the final landscaping plan had to be approved by the tree council and it still hasn't been. And we have to take the original resolution and modify it, so that can still be a carry, carry on condition because we still haven't gotten that final landscaping plan.
So it sounds like you're okay with it then, Laura?
Yeah, if you guys are happy with the building, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, but, but the landscaping plan that you're awaiting, Laura, we expect that to be the final one, right?
Yeah, so the tree council reviewed just this building with the berm and the Norway's Bruce and felt that was sufficient to, to buffer this building to the bike path. But they did say they still want to see the two buildings with the final sort of idea of the plant count list. And then they wanted to see if there are places that they could add some trees, um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I think I'm okay with the resolution. I know that the final landscaping plan was there in the original one. I'm okay for this building to be added on with a resolution, Chairman Walsh. But I do want to recommend that we, either we're going to have a landscaping plan carryover as a condition or we're going to have the landscaping plan.
Yep, there will be conditions and, uh, um, yes, there will be conditions and hopefully some bullets that, uh, uh, for historic purposes, um, document, you know, our decision and, uh, recommendation on our decision tonight. Including the resolution. Hey, Mr. Laflamme, with that?
I am.
Anybody, anybody from the board concerned? Okay, hearing, hearing no one concerned, then we'll have a tentative resolution for approval of a recreation building with conditions, um, at our next meeting then.
All right. And, and the, the capture of all of our reasoning points are going to be in the whereas's, right? We're going to make sure.
I think we should put that in a whereas and make it very clear because I, you know, I share your, I really think that is so awfully close. I've said it multiple times, I hate how close it is. And also for the record, I don't think the HVAC should be on the side of the bike path.
Yeah, that's, that was another point I was going to bring up too, right? So, I, I, so I think we do need to see a drawing with where you're planning on putting that HVAC. But if it's going to be in the berm side, I mean, it's another thing that now goes into that bike path.
Yeah, well, you know what, we can, that's a good point and I agree. And, uh, you could, uh, update the, uh, at least the proposal that shows that and then we can, you know, condition it if there's a concern. And we address it. Actually, it works both ways too, as Mr. Diarpino stated. Always forget about the utility, uh, spaces. So that would be another, uh, bullet of, of why the building, uh, size should be is what it is because you're going to lose some to utilities also. Uh, but we want to make sure it looks good, uh, from the bike path and from just in general from the outside. So anything we can do to keep it tight and clean would, uh, be beneficial to you guys and to the community.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if the parking lot side is an option for the, the condenser units, but.
Well, can you, actually, Charles, can you just answer, Brett? Are, are those condensers going to be ground level, not berm height level?
Yeah, they're ground level, they'll be hidden behind the berm. Uh, they, they usually stand about three foot tall. Right now, the berm's proposed at five to six feet with planning, so even if they, it goes on the berm side, you wouldn't see it from the bike trail.
Okay.
I just feel like it's just one more encroachment towards the public property, which I don't like. But I would just also say that if we're going to look at that as a preliminary or re, rebring that as the site plan modification, I think it needs some timelines adjusted. Um, because the phase two timeline, I think, has slipped. So if you guys don't care, I'll also check the timeline and adjust the timelines, um, in that resolution as, as necessary.
That sounds good.
Yeah, actually Laura, I'm glad you brought up a point about, I did have the thought about the placement of the condenser units. I'm glad you were a little bit, um, more proactive than me in saying it, so. Yeah, it, it is, it is a concern that I have, but it, it is truly another encroachment on the public side. So we need to just make sure that it is something that is just not be visible.
So Jengis, let's just talk about that because it's, it's coming up. If you're looking at the diagram and you look at the southernmost point of the closest portion of that building to the berm, are those condensers going to go to the south of the point or are they going to go to the east toward the front of the building?
Could you share the site plan again, Laura? Yeah, so they would go, they would not, and that, that's correct, Chris. They would not approach on the, the boundary line. They would be on that, carrying that contour line that essentially starts to break down towards the pond. So they would be more on what would be the, the northern tip of the approaching part of the building. So they would be, they would be 20 something feet away from property line. That's correct, right there.
All right, just wanted to confirm, we, I, I assumed that, but I didn't, I didn't, I didn't ask. I just assumed they would not be, because it's a great point, if they're further encroaching, that would, that would not be good.
Yeah, we would utilize that level area and essentially it would hide those condenser unit, units away from what is really the aesthetically pleasing parts of the building. Um, the pond view, the parking lot, and you, you, usually we try to hide those in a place where they don't take away from the look of the building and then that would be a good level area to do so.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, we, we, yeah, recognize it's, 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 it's hiding it on the side of the public, but it's understood, I, I said what I said.
Just think of it as, um, you're like not so, not, I mean, I know that you're coming from the point of view as we want to hide them from the people that are paying the rent for us, but like we want to make sure that they're not negatively impacting. Because, I mean, yeah, the berm's there now, but now you've got something that is also going noise, noise towards the bike path. So like, if you want to put fencing up around it that, you know, helps with the noise or something, like something, because every single thing you do on that side of the building is something that's closer to the lot length than we would normally ever allow and impactful to the people that are traveling on the bike path.
I guess I will, I will put the condensers wherever you folks want me to put condensers, so.
Well, I guess, you know, your, your responsibility to make a recommendation. Take a look at it, you know, don't commit tonight, take a look at it, make a recommendation. Hopefully you can get that with us, to us within the two week period so we can still act on this resolution. Uh, if we're not comfortable with it, you know, we have a couple of options. One is condition it, resolve it, or, uh, we pull the resolution until we iron it out. Let's see, see if you can get us and we see if we can work through it, uh, in the next two weeks. How's that sound?
Sounds great.
Yeah. And, and I mean, remember, there's a spectrum between, I'm speaking to myself, between being comfortable in doing something versus being happy with it. Right, and so I, I don't think I'm ever going to be at the happy with it point. So I'm just trying to figure out between the PUD definition, between our concerns with the public, our concerns for the tenants and residents and for the aesthetics of the building, right? Where's going to be that comfortable point? Just wanted to say that.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Khan. All right, so it sounds like we have a path forward. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all set, okay. All right, I guess we're all set and, um, you know, see what you can get us within, you know, a week and a half or so, so we have time to take a look at it. And, uh, any concerns, we can, like you said, we can address it by pulling the, uh, resolution or conditioning, uh, the resolution to be able to handle it, okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, that's it for discussion tonight and we'll move right to the planning department and some reports. And planning department updates, I don't know if that's your Clark or is that Laura?
So Clark put together the list that I would read. Do you want to, do you want to go through them back or do you want me to?
I'll hit a couple very quickly, just, just to let everyone know that there's a number of projects that are still going on. I'll hit the ones that didn't appear on the agenda tonight, but we have been in tou, in touch with the applicants and they are working on them. 2147, um, they're working on a detailed engineering package that we should see in a couple of weeks. They'll probably be on the next planning board meeting. Um, Chairman Walsh reminded us about the EV charging station locations. So that's something, we'll hit them up to get that on the final version of the site plan. Um, the project at 1356 Um, the project at thirteen fifty-six Balltown Road that proposed twenty townhomes, ten buildings, uh, two townhomes per building, that's still being worked on. Harmon Grove, um, the proposed one hundred and thirty-eight apartments, that's still being worked on as well as the Trinity Baptist Church at twenty-six thirty-five. Um, we did receive some information just late this afternoon on eighteen fifty-one Union Street, which is the proposed new maintenance building at the Mohawk Club. So we're just, uh, literally didn't even get to open that package, but they've put some materials together. And then, um, Laura and I spoke or exchanged some emails with Tommy Nietzsche of the Broken Inn. So we have a meeting next Tuesday with him, um, to just talk about, uh, how his project is progressing and any proposed next step for that. Ace Hardware, we will, we'll have another meeting with them next week regarding them coming to the planning board to update their site plan for really a finalized uh, definition of where they would be storing materials in their parking lot. We wanted to get that um, finalized as well as they will be uh, doing some foundation work on the, uh, greenhouse that should be going on in September. And they also had committed to paving the parking lot this fall. So there still should be quite a bit of work at the Ace Hardware project. And then just the last one, just as an update for everyone, there's work going on at Kelts Farm that I'm sure, uh, everyone's aware of. It was limited to just some clearing work that should be done by today or tomorrow. And then the applicant is working with the DEC to get approval to begin the water and sewer work maybe towards the end of September. So, so that, that project is starting to kind of kick into the construction mode. So that, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. All right.
Chairman Walsh, can I ask a question?
Sure can.
And, a- a- and I'm sorry, be- because the minutes from the last meeting that was, that was available, specifically the Balltown Road. A- and it wasn't clear to me, where did we end up with traffic concerns or did we not end up anywhere?
For which project? The townhouses or for the apartment?
Yeah, the townhouses in Balltown, yeah.
Well, the townhouses submitted a, uh, a traffic, I guess, call it a summary, um, you know, based on
Right, but I meant post discussion. I had seen that. A- a- any ish, anything came up in the discussion last time that changes anything in that summary or?
I, I don't think so. I think, I think we asked for in more details.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, that, that was pretty much it. Um, um, you know, again, the numbers, um, uh, uh, were less with the townhouse proposal versus a single family, full build of the single family homes. Uh, that, that's kind of basically what they presented and it was based on published, uh, you know, numbers. Uh, but, uh, you know, it's a work in progress and, uh, I expect them to come back, I'm assuming, because I know the planning office has to take a look at the proposal and come up with what area variances are gonna be required to support that project. So it's a kind of a work in progress, right, Laura?
Yeah, I think the applicant had said that they were gonna put together a table of the variances that we're requesting, but Clark's been working on it anyway so that we can be ready to cross check what their thoughts were.
Okay. A- and is there any, uh, uh, I mean, n- nothing has involved the public yet on this project, right, other than the newspaper article?
Right, um, we haven't. I mean, the package that they submitted to us is very conceptual, like it doesn't have, it's very conceptual. I don't know if, that, you know, they're willing to move forward with the conceptual or now they want to work a little bit more on the engineering. Um, we gave them some takeaway points, but I don't think they've actually reached out, have they, Clark?
No, they haven't, not yet, but I think both of those projects need some more, uh, traffic work.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, how about the historic preservation town code? Anything new there?
I, I, um, I really don't have anything new to report. I've sort of been AWOL the last couple of weeks up north of the border. Um, so I haven't, uh, kind of talked to Paul about, uh, the legal changes, legal language he wants to put in it. I don't know whether, Paul, have you got anything to add?
I don't. I haven't even looked at it yet.
All right, that's where we are.
Well, we'll keep it, you know, we'll keep
Moving on.
We'll keep it there. It's, it's on our screen and something will get done, uh.
North of the border, Dennis, you mean Clifton Park?
No, back where they, up, up where they take COVID seriously, yeah.
All right, and, um, speaking of COVID, uh, Laura, reports or Clark on COVID nineteen?
Yeah, I, um, I had put in the email and underlined virtual only, but Clark had mentioned to me that I should remind you guys it was a virtual meeting only and it completely slipped my mind. So I apologize to those of you that showed up. I had meant to re- remind you that it was a virtual meeting only. But kudos to anybody who was willing to put their jacket on and go to town hall. Um, so, and this is what I'd said before the meeting, I think, I mean, we had some hiccups in our hybrid meetings, I think partially because Seth wasn't able to support us and finalize some things, but he came back and was able to, I think, reconnect. So we're quite capable of doing the hybrid. For the time being, I would expect that our meetings, at least for September, are gonna be held remotely. That was the direction I got from the town supervisor. Um, I think that's partly because it's a little bit difficult for us to balance how many people are in the audience with how many board members have to be in attendance with the number of people that are allowed in the room. But we, I know you guys, I mean, feel free to reach out to me if you don't feel this way, but, you know, can do a hybrid, so, um, I, you know, I'm comfortable moving forward with however, however we do it. I think that we try to make our virtual meetings as accommodating everybody as we possibly can. I'm always checking my email. I'm always offering service to anybody who wants to attend the meetings virtually, so, um, I'm certainly still out there and happy to help anybody who wants to do, um, attend the meeting virtually and also, you know, if we, if we're ready to go back to hybrid, I know we're ready, but for the time being, let's just consider our meetings to be virtual.
Yeah, it's a good point, Laura. You know, you're more than willing, planning office, to take any comments. So any, any residents that are watching tonight, remember you can send letters, emails, you can get, you don't need to have a computer. You can call in, you can get hold of Laura and you can call in if you want to be heard during privilege of the floor. We'd be more than happy to hear what you have to say. And there's many ways to be able to accomplish that and, uh, we'll help if, uh, we need to.
Yeah, I mean, it even comes down to just getting people on my cell phone and putting them on speaker. I mean, we've all been there. We can get them to the meeting for sure.
Yep, we wanna, we wanna hear from you and we wanna make sure you have the opportunity to be heard. Okay, um, that's it under reports. If you don't have anything else, Laura, Clark? Okay, we'll go commission business. Uh, Mr. Diarpino, anything else for us tonight?
No.
And Mr. McPartland?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Khan?
Nothing here, thank you.
Mr. Scribby tennis?
Nothing for me.
Uh, Mr. Laflamme?
Uh, nothing to add, thanks.
All right, and Ms. Schenfield?
Nope, nothing for me.
And how about you, Ms. Gold?
Nothing for me either.
All right, the only thing that, uh, I, I personally would like to mention is just such, just such based on project leads, um, um, Mr. Diarpino has volunteered for the, uh, Balltown Road Townhomes. Chris Laflamme, uh, has the hundred and thirty-eight apartment units from Amador. Um, Mohawk, uh, uh, the Mohawk Maintenance Garage, Mr. McPartland, I believe that was you, just right, and I think Trinity Baptist Church, if it does come back, I believe that was Mr. Oster, but I can't recall. So we'll just check with Mr. Oster. I thought he volunteered for that. And I think we got everything covered right now, as far as I can recall. So, so I appreciate everybody's support as always and I have no other, uh, uh, business to talk about. All right? Uh, motion to adjourn for tonight?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we got, uh, a motion by Mr. Scribby tennis and it looks like it was seconded by Mr. Diarpino. All those in favor of, um, adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, hearing no, no one opposed, we'll adjourn that tonight's meeting at eight twenty-two PM. Thank you, everybody, and have a great night.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
I wasn't sure if you were gonna say anything to Mike.